Good evening, welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. Thank you for joining us. We will need to do a roll call because of a closed session after the meeting.
Ms. Atkins? Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brant?
Here.
Ms. Cadellia?
Here.
Mr. Sternad?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, going through the agenda, there's nothing marked by staff for discussion on pages one through five. If anyone has anything in particular to discuss on any of those pages, please at this time say so.
Yep.
Ms. Cadellia?
I had a couple of questions about the January 2020 monthly reports. The first was just a logistics thing, I think, because it's very early in March. Will we get the February monthly reports for the second set of March meetings? Or are we usually two months back?
Yes, the January ones were a meeting behind.
Okay.
So next council meeting will be the February.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure. And then the second question I have is, I think it was October that I had requested that we get a one-pager on the airport as a departmental report, takeoffs, landings, status updates, and I don't see it in here. When is that coming?
I think we talked about it, but it was, it was closed.
But there's nothing, no progress on the runway or things that we're doing?
Oh, if you want to report on the runway.
Just, just general, like a one-pager?
It's actually on hold.
Okay.
Until April, at least.
Yeah, and so on our payments, when we pay the contractor, that's kind of your update for now, because right now it's.
And that's what I saw, and I'm like, well, we're cutting checks, so there's got to be something, but, okay, so probably in April we'll see something?
Yeah.
May?
Tom, is your mic on?
I just turned it on, yes.
Okay.
Sorry. What I can do is just give you, I can give you a kind of a summary of where, where we were in a memo format. The committee actually hasn't met in a couple of months, since even December.
I don't want to make more work. I just wanted to make sure that it's part of the packet, but I guess if there's nothing going on, it doesn't make sense, so May is likely when we'll see.
There may be some stuff that would be worth communicating at the end of this month, just from where the zoning is with the county and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
It's kind of been void for 30 days.
Great, awesome. That's, that's it? Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else on pages one through five? Okay, otherwise we'll move on to page six. There are a couple items which are final considerations. We'll move on to number three, which is marked under Administrative Services. Who's taking the lead on that?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the approval of the collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI for the coming fiscal year. AFSMI has a contract that's ending here in 2020, and this would extend it for one additional year. It does make quite a few changes to the contract. This is the first opportunity the city has had to renegotiate with that bargaining unit since the law was changed, and so in accordance with the law and direction from council, it does move many of the items that were in the prior contract out of that and over either into the personnel policy or supplemental policies that apply to the AFSMI employees. So it trues up the wage increase for the coming year. It's the same one that is in the final year of the FIRE contract, so 1.5% on July 1, 2020, and 1.35% on April 1, 2021.
Okay, questions or discussion on that item? Number four?
Number four is similar, except it's with the Marion Police Protectives Association. When the bargaining law was changed, police unions and firefighter unions were still allowed to retain complete collective bargaining rights, and so this one does contain quite a bit more than the AFSMI contract does. The wages, however, are consistent with the AFSMI contract and the FIRE contract at 1.5% and 1.3, 1.35%. There were several sections in it that we added for language based on issues that had been identified either by administration or by the union that were causing administrative troubles for us. So for example, there was a Section 8 that was added for the purposes of court appearances to clarify what happens if an officer has to appear in court. There were some changes to how vacation approvals will take place, and then ultimately changes to the out-of-pocket maximums on insurance to, again, true that up with what's contained in the FIRE contract. But both of them are one-year agreements.
Questions? Comments? Okay, number five?
I think I'll go ahead and address five through nine, if you guys are good with that, because they all kind of go together. So I'm here to talk about the General Obligation Series 2020A and 2020B. I would like to start with the calendar here, just kind of showing, we already set the public hearing dates, so now we're at the point of public hearing. Actions will include holding the public hearings, adopting the pre-levy resolution, which in the budget we have included $345,000 worth of debt service for fiscal year 2021, so that pre-levy is what authorizes us to include that in the fiscal year 2021 budget. We will also authorize the release of the preliminary official statement, which was included in your packet, and then set the sale date for March 19th, and then you will see us come back again on the 19th, and this is usually the date that Tiana Pula will come and present also on the rating. So as you can see on the calendar, March 4th, tomorrow, we have a rating call with Moonies. That rating won't be released until March 11th. So that's where we're at and what the action will, and then I'm going to go into kind of a summary of each of the series here. So 2020A has an estimated par value of $8.455 million with a maturity of June 1st, 2038. This is kind of the new monies that are supported by the debt service levy. And then Series 2020B has an estimated par value of $10.865 million with a maturity of 6.1, 2029. 2020B is a refunding of Series 2012A, 2012B, 2014A, and 2014B, which are supported by the debt service levy as well as abated by TIF. Kind of going next into the outstanding GO debt, because this is always the conversation that comes up. Our 2019-2020 statutory limit right now is $144,853.52. You can see our current GO debt outstanding right there is $61,630,000, and then you'll see my note at the bottom. Series 2019B is subject to annual appropriation, therefore it is not included in that number, and that was the issuance for the airport that we did last spring. So we have Series 2020A added in there at the $8.455 million, Series 2020B added in there at 10.865, and then calling 2012A, 2012B, 2014A, and 2014B at $11,935,000. And then the June 1st, 2020 principal payment of $2,760,000, which is all of the other series aside from the four that we're calling, would end our outstanding GO at approximately $66,255,000 at the end of June for this fiscal year. And then I did kind of put through each of the public hearings on here so that you can see what they are actually for. So the reason why there's three public hearings instead of one is because they have to identify in the state code the purpose behind each. So this first list is the essential corporate purposes and an amount not to exceed $14,350,000. This is for the four refunding series. The new battalion chief vehicle, the new medic vehicle, Phase of Central Corridor, 19th to 27th Street, Irish Drive Extension, and the Irish Drive Tower Terrace Traffic Signal. And then the next one was for general corporate purposes. This was the Fire Station 2 exterior repairs in the amount of $35,000. And then the third one is for urban renewal-related purposes, which is the Fire Station Headquarters. That's all I have for presentation. Do you have questions?
Steve?
So the purpose for refunding the 2012 and 2014 bonds is because of the interest rate changes, I assume?
Correct, interest rate changes, and then in working with our financial advisor, remember we had that $1.2 million sitting in the debt service fund that we talked about applying to the FIRE project? Well, you can't, you have to use debt service to pay principal and interest payments, so one way to do that is to apply it to that call, if that makes sense. We're going to call those four series. That's why there was a difference when you looked at the amount. $10.865 million is what we have proposed, but the actual balance of those is $11,935. So it's twofold. Interest rates are better, and we're able to pay some of it down.
Can you explain why we're considering issuing a $35,000 bond going through all of the rhetoric, paperwork, cost of a bond for $35,000?
I think.
Is there other alternative, other ways to do that that's more financially appropriate?
I think the short answer to your question is the fact that we were looking at it in total. So when we were in the CIP group discussing the different projects, we had kind of lumped all of the FIRE projects together, but then when you go out for public hearing, you have to go through the purposes and state which projects fall under which purpose. So we were looking at the amount in total as to how you apply the dollars technically. Yes, we could have decided that some other project get paid with, like, interest in capital projects or an internal loan versus that one, but the way we looked at that was kind of grouping all of those. We have the Fire Station, if you look at the list of projects, oop, wrong direction.
So is it a, is it a separate bond?
It's not a separate bond, so that's why.
It's being treated separately for purposes of the public hearing.
It's just the public hearing that's separate.
Okay, thank you. I was reading that as we're going to go through all the issuance work for a $35,000 bond. So it's just part of the grouping, part of the 2020A?
Correct, it's part of 2020A.
And/or B bond issuance. It's only treated separately for purposes of the public hearing. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. Any other questions on that?
Yes, Mr. Sternad?
Just a quick, just a numbers game here. Do you happen to have savings on the call-in on the 2012, 2014 A and B both series? Are those any ballpark? I'm just looking as a ballpark what the savings is.
I think you shared that the last meeting, or a couple of meetings ago.
I know it was over $400,000. I want to say it was between $450,000 and $500,000. It should be in the pre-sale analysis that I provided.
Okay, and I'll, I'll look into that. Thank you.
I can make sure I present that on Thursday.
No problem.
That'd be good. Other questions?
Nope, I'm just staying up here for the next three items.
Okay. Please proceed.
So the next three items are for the Public Service Maintenance Facility financing. So we're looking at a total of $10.8 million, and it's split into three revenue debts. 50% funded by road use tax, $5.4 million, 25% sanitary sewer at $2.7 million, and 25% solid waste at $2.7 million. Staff did receive bids from three banks, and the proposal that we are pushing forward is from US Bank. The term sheet was provided in your packet. I did find out today, an update, that they are, the legal is still looking at road use, but they were planning on finishing that one up today. And I did put in front of each of you a loan agreement, which there will be three of those, but they all look pretty much the same, so I just gave you the one, and then a copy of each of the resolutions that you would be approving on Thursday. So in summary, the loan terms, the offer has been extended. I gave you the loan term sheet in lieu of the documents that weren't ready, but we have reached out, and the offer is being extended with a proposed closing at or around March 10th of 2020. It's proposed at a 10-year note amortized for 20 years at 2.43% with monthly principal and interest payments, and then out of all of the terms that you may have looked at on that sheet, the big loan covenant is that we will collect fees and charges for utilities such that net revenues in each fiscal year shall exceed the debt service requirement in each fiscal year by 125% of net revenue, and that net revenue is operating revenues minus operating expenses. And I did not do the math for you in the thing, but I did do the math for you here. Road use tax, we're looking at a 20, approximately $28,500 per month, or $342,000 per year, so the loan covenant says that we'll have net revenues of $427,500. For sanitary sewer, you're looking at a monthly payment of $14,250,000 or $171,000 per year, with net revenue then being $213,750. And solid waste, $14,250 per month, $171,000 per year, with a loan covenant of net revenues of $213,750. That being said, staff has reviewed each of these funds. We are meeting the covenant as of today, but we have to bear in mind that with the different recycling fees and the flow agreement with Cedar Rapids for O and M on sanitary sewer, this will have to be something we continue to review and keep looking, and may mean that as those expenditures increase, we may also need to raise our fees to continue to meet this covenant. Questions?
Well, I'm assuming as we get that loan paid down, say we're in year five, for example, if we've got that loan paid down a fair amount at that point in time, that those covenants are subject to negotiation?
Okay.
I think, I think that's one of the benefits of having a loan agreement with a bank instead of issuing, looking at bonds or something else like.
Right.
Because I think we've got more flexibility on how we are able to.
There is more flexibility.
Manage this going forward.
And just so you know, one of the other that was structured the same, that loan covenant was 145%.
Okay.
So we're confident that that's a good term.
So will you be presenting on Thursday by how much right now we exceed these?
I can try and put that together, but, yep.
An estimate.
Yep.
I think if we're going to agree to the covenants.
I know that the solid.
It's nice to know how we stand today.
I know the solid waste one is really tight.
Okay.
But I think the other two are fine once you consider the full utility for sanitary sewer and not just looking at the operating fund. But yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, any need to discuss number 13 or number one under public safety? Otherwise we'll move on to engineering, number one.
So on Thursday, we'll have a public hearing regarding the Seymour Trail Phase 3. So that is the area in blue on the map. So basically that's taking down the existing bridge that goes over Indian Creek, sandblasting it, cleaning up, repainting it, and rebuilding it so that it has that railroad theme, and then building the trail from that bridge down the embankment, under the bridge into Marion Boulevard. The DOT received bids. The low bid was from PCI at $1.6 million. It was a little bit over the engineer's estimate, but there were four bids that they received. Work shall commence no later than July 13th of 2020 and be completed within 150 working days. There are liquidated damages of $1,500 per day. So likely because they got the other contract for the, the bridge demo, when they bring their cranes out, I assume they're going to do both projects at the same time.
Okay.
And then just as a clarification, the DOT is going paperless, and so instead of having a typical contract that gets signed, as part of the resolution, we're adding Lon as the signatory, so you guys are giving him permission to push the button.
Okay, is that clear? I mean, Lon would sign the actual agreement with the DOT, but.
It would still be a resolution.
Subject to council's approval, yep. Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question. When you talked about this bridge, and I may, I'm sure you mentioned it in the past, but I just kind of picked up, picked up on it better tonight. You're talking about making this bridge with a railroad theme?
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean, and when are we going to? Do we know what that means at this point, or is that theme and the design of it to be determined?
We have engineering drawings, so.
Do we?
Yeah.
Okay.
It probably pre-existed your timeline, counsel.
Yeah, I, yeah, okay. I don't recall seeing them since I've been on, but if they were, I've just not remembered them. Okay, I'll just get together with you on that, and just curious as to what that's going to look like.
Could it, is it too much to ask to put it in for Thursday, since we have a public hearing?
I can add a slide.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Will?
Can you do the math for me? What's 150 working days? When's that going to be done?
So a typical construction season is only 120 working days, so a working day is a Monday through Friday.
Right.
Assuming it's not raining, assuming it's not utility conflicts, so it's a year plus.
A year plus, okay. And then, so they're, they're going to have the cranes on there to take the, the bridge down, that's going to close the trail.
Yeah, so it doesn't mean that they're going to take all 150 days, but obviously they're paying for the cranes while they're down there, so.
Do you have any idea on?
We can't discuss any of that until we get the contract signed with them, so I don't know their schedule or anything.
Gotcha, okay, that's true.
And we can't jeopardize talking to them before the contract's signed, or we lose the grant.
And that's a late start date, so they could start sooner.
They could.
Yep, okay.
As I say, one comment is the, the spread of these bids just.
It's not a simple project, that's why.
I understand, but it's, you see two that are right together at one end and two that are, you know, $800,000 apart on the other end, so I just thought that spread of that was extremely large.
And there's a detailed bid tab in your packet, so.
I saw that, yeah. I saw some of the line items were hugely different as well, so on where they got that dollar difference.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, so there'll be the public hearing on Thursday on that item number three.
Item three is our project calendar for our sanitary sewer slip lining projects. This is where we go into older parts of town, and we actually put a liner on the inside of the pipe to extend the life of the pipe to prevent the INI, the infiltration and the water getting into the, the pipe. So this includes six, eight, and 10 inches in diameter pipe. The engineer's estimate is $157,577. Sealed bids will be received on March 31st, and council consideration on April 7th of 2020. Work shall be completed no later than October 30th of 2020, and there's $300 per day in liquidated damages if they go over that date.
Questions on that? Go ahead.
Kind of piggyback to this project. Do you have the, do you have a list of the drain tile that's going in this year? Of where you're doing drain tile?
Yeah, we'll have the bids actually come in next council meeting on that.
Gotcha, okay.
You guys have already approved the, the work calendar for that, so the, right now they're getting bids put together to submit.
That was, that's all. I'm just curious when we're going to know the.
You already know.
Of where, of which, which sections?
Yep.
Oh, see, I, okay, we'll talk after.
Yep.
Anything else on item number three? Okay, number four?
Number four is the project calendar for the Safe Rouse's School project. So this is next to Fourth Avenue and 14th Street. It's reconstructing that intersection, and then we have acquired by quiet title the old railroad property, and so then connecting that, a lot of times now the kids cut through that area anyway, so this is actually making a defined area for them to cross, and then putting a rapid flashing beacon on 15th for them then to cross the street safely. So this was a grant that Kesha, with the Planning Department, was able to acquire.
Ms. Cadellia?
I'm not sure how similar this one might be to what was put near Novak, but I thought the one near Novak had some issues. You guys have had it, you're comfortable with this coming forward in terms of the engineering, the traffic calming, and the school has looked at this as well, and they're on board.
The school wants this, yes. It's part of their Safe Rouse's.
But the design works, like, everybody's seen it, or we just, this is what we come up with and it gets pushed? I'm just wondering if there was collaboration, because I don't remember if it was.
It's pulled right out of the Safe Rouse's School book that was collaborated, had public input.
Thanks.
They would actually eventually get additional funding and connect that all the way down to the other schools and then east on First as well, but the grant only supported so much funding.
So that will be, that will be completed this year?
Yeah, so this has a, so the engineer's estimate is $135,000. Sealed bids were received on March 31st of 2020, with consideration awarded on April 7th of 2020. Work shall begin no later than July 6th of 2020 and be completed within 40 working days, and there's liquidated damages in the amount of $300 per day. So number five is the TAC report back to the Marion Independent School District, and there are some representatives in the audience if you have additional questions. But basically, the, the TAC changed the order of them, so they're not necessarily the same order as their original request, but they're in order of priority. So the first thing is the crossing right out here, Sixth Avenue and 13th. So the proposal is to add two of the signs on each side, so this is similar to what I drive through down on East Jefferson Street, down in Iowa City, and then in the center, similar to on Seventh Avenue where we have the, the state law yield to pedestrians within crosswalk that we'll have to put in the middle. There may be some issues with snowplows taking this out, but now that we're getting into the spring, hopefully we're done with snowplows for a while. But this is our proposed short-term solution. The long-term solution, eventually they will come down 15th Street, use the roundabout to get down there. But the problem right now why they can't use the roundabout is they want to use the signal to cross Seventh Avenue. That's why they're coming across on 13.
That will be there year-round in the street?
This will be here year-round in the street, yes, unless the snowplow takes it out.
Yes, sir. Once the, the, once they're using the roundabout and crossing.
Then this will likely go away.
Is it going to stay, the sign's going to stay, or are they going to go away?
I would propose taking them away, but that's a ways down the road. So the next item is regarding some of the crosswalks. So rather than painting the crosswalk here at 12th, we already have a three-way stop and use the existing crosswalks that are there, so just as the public service annual painting program, they'll just repaint the crosswalks that are out there. So the Public Service Department does that twice a year.
And that's, this is all acceptable to the school district?
Yep. So the next one is their request making Fourth Avenue one-way. The school has purchased a portion of a fourth. The section over here hasn't quite been cleared up because of the railroad property. Eventually, if they buy all of that, they could make that into a one-way, but the city of Marion has not typically been in favor of one-way traffic. The school will train the parents to try and come from one direction to drop off the kids, but it won't actually be signed that way.
Trying for years.
We're going to take the luck with that.
Okay.
Number four is regarding the speed feedback signs. It was a request that they had in that we split the cost of them. Last year, we did a trial where we actually put our classifiers out. They're the small, black things that we stick to the pavement. We put them out for one week, and then the PD came out and put their speed trailer up for one week, and then we left our speed classifiers out for another week after that. There was actually no decrease in speed during any of that time period. So there have been national studies that show that the speed back, speed feedback signs do lower driver's speed, but there's no studies to figure out how long that lasts. but there's no studies to figure out how long that lasts. So after day one of installation, how long does that last? If you see that flashing light, how long until you become immune to it and it doesn't matter anymore? So we're recommending that we basically do the same thing in this area where we'll put our classifiers out, work with the PD, put the temporary ones that we already have out rather than spend money on something that may not be effective.
Are you talking about a similar flashing sign for the speed limit that's in front of Bowman Wood School?
Yes.
And that's what you're referring to?
Yep. So it has the speed limit, has the speed that you're going, yep.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I think it's effective. I think it is a good reminder, so I mean, when I go through there, I mean, it's a school, so everybody slows down, but to me, it seems to be effective when I see the cars around me when I go through that area.
We put them on 29th and several areas and it didn't actually affect driver behavior.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
So we wanna do a trial first basically before we spend money.
Okay. Will?
I'm sorry, you said this was between the high school and Starry, right?
That's where we'll do the speed trail, yeah.
That's where they wanted the
Yes.
Okay, any further questions, comments?
Oh, we're not done yet.
When were you gonna put those out? Sorry.
We have to wait till the weather's conducive to that, so we have to make sure that there's not any more snow. We have to glue them to the pavement, so it'll happen this spring, summer.
Like May? So before school's out, though?
Well, we'll obviously try, but So another request that they had was moving the parking from the east side to the west side on 14th Street. With previous snow parking requests, there's been a lot of neighborhoods that have not wanted that. And so this is probably their biggest hurdle, and so we'll have to have some school support when we do this. And so we'll wait here until we make sure all the, the snowbirds are back and do a notification and do a council meeting with school here to make sure that they can justify why they wanna do this with the change in traffic pattern. But basically, they want the parents to come northbound on 14th to drop the kids off and move the parking over to the other side of the street.
And is that just for the section of 14th Street that borders Starry?
Yeah, it would be from, like this is F all the way to C.
Okay.
Just for signage and to not make it too confusing. And then that's related to then the stop sign at C and 14th. If we make that traffic change, then it would make more sense to put the stop sign in at that intersection because then there would be more pedestrian and vehicle conflict points, but And then the last item is regarding their facility that they're reusing now. There's actually an existing crosswalk that's in there. They requested rapid flashing beacons for the few cars that park on this side. It's too close to the intersection to install it there. It could be shifted over here, but after they looked at it further, they didn't think it was as big of a deal as they originally thought it was, since there's already a sign crossing there and painted.
Okay.
So with all those recommendations, we'll move forward with either getting public service to install signs or us installing signs, working with the PD, moving forward on all those in between everything else. Those are our recommendations to move forward.
Okay, questions, concerns? Questions for the school district representatives here?
That's key.
Yes, go ahead.
So I guess I'm a little confused on the 14th, no parking on the one side. So what's the recommendation in the TAC report? Should we just wait?
Basically, either this spring or closer to the summer, because they don't wanna do it in the middle of the school's season anyways. So they want the school to be done and start fresh. But that's something where typically if this was a citizen asking to change the no parking, they would do a petition. City council would have to approve that change. And so because we know that the neighborhood typically comes out against that, we wanna make sure that it's a meeting that the school can be here to help push their side of it. But ultimately, that's council's decision on whether parking moves or not.
So before receiving and concurring with the TAC report?
We're gonna bring that item back up at a future date.
That's why my question is, is it in the TAC report saying that we agree that we should put parking on the west side or the no park?
Yeah, I mean, it is gonna decrease, so it'd be a separate item that we'll address. It is gonna decrease the amount of parking that's available because there's driveways on the west side that you obviously can't park in front of. And there are also fire hydrants on the west side. That's why the west side had the no parking and there's parking on the east side. By switching that, the neighborhood may not like that. And so that's the first hurdle to come up. And so again, we'll have to have, similar to a public hearing where they can all come forward and speak. And then city council ultimately makes that decision.
Sure. I get all that. I'm just wondering when we vote on this Thursday to receive if I'll concur, how it's worded in there about this, because I'm personally not concurring with TAC on moving the parking. I need to be convinced on that.
So it's a, I can tell you it's a separate issue. That's why we're saying that we're gonna bring it back up.
Understand that.
So that's not gonna be, to Will's point,
If I'm gonna concur.
As we concur with that or look at that on Thursday, that element on 14th Street will not be part of that concurrence?
No, so in order to change the parking, there has to be a resolution. We're not approving any resolutions tonight.
Okay.
This is just a motion moving forward. So if this was a request just for 14th Street to change that, I would have a TAC report and then after that you would have a resolution. So you can concur with the TAC report, but then vote the resolution down. But the resolution is what I'm actually changing.
I believe the, what Councilman Brandon, concurring with the TAC report, the TAC reports, the tax recommendation would be to move it forward to the public input process, but not to approve the
Sure.
to approve the change of parking. If that's the clarification you're seeking to make.
I understand that. I just don't know if I'm comfortable concurring with that report saying that we should move that forward when I don't necessarily agree with it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but it'll be decided.
In the future, I understand.
In the future.
I would just go on the record with your comments after you vote and say
Or before, yeah.
Yeah, and say where your thought is.
Thank you. That's all, yeah.
Anything else? Okay.
Lot of stuff there.
Any other questions on that? Thank you. Under community development, there are three items. None of them are marked for discussion, but please point out anything you wanna discuss.
Your honor, if I can just make
Yes, sir.
The resolution approving Peterson Property's addition final plat, this is a county plat north on North 10th Street. We're still waiting for signatures on some documents, so if we don't have that, we'll pull that for Thursday, just so you know if it's missing on Thursday.
Okay, so that may not appear on the agenda for Thursday. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to discussion regarding format of presentations for a council member at large vacancy appointment.
So a lot of ideas have come forward from council as well as staff, and so I think we just needed a discussion to kind of finalize how we want the next council meeting to go as far as presentations and questions and such. So I provided two options in the council memo. One was we have a set of predetermined questions and I ask the applicants on a rotating order. So applicant A, B, C, D, the next question's asked to applicant B, C, D, A, so that each person has an opportunity to go first, so that nobody has an unfair advantage. The other option was to have the questions completed by the applicants ahead of time. And then specific questions could still be asked if needed by council, but just wanted to get your thoughts.
Yes, Ms. Cudelo?
I would like to propose an option three, which is a hybrid of one and two. I feel very strongly that I wanna see as much spontaneity as possible with responses just because then we'll know it's organically coming from them and not other people who can help them at home. So I think that the questions that are more like, do you plan to run, you know, in the future? I think those quick ones, we could, if we could agree to what those quick ones might be to put it out there. But I would prefer to ask them live in the rotating order. And I would also, I do have a couple of questions to submit. I just wanna make sure, can we ask our own questions that we submit? Like, can you put, if I give you, I have two questions. So I'd like my name to be put by them so that I can make sure I ask those. I don't know if anybody, you know, I know that we have kind of like a list of questions we've asked in the past. Maybe we could get those, we could discuss this on Thursday and pull out the ones that we would agree to put out in advance if people agree with that.
Yeah, I don't care who asks the question. I just, I mean, if you wanted to ask your own questions and we go through the candidates, that's fine. Otherwise, I was willing to ask each question, but whichever route you guys wanna go.
And then you had mentioned something about having kind of quarantining, in the spirit of the coronavirus. Quarantining all, everybody out except for, you know, the question, the person who's answering so that they don't hear the other responses. Will had mentioned that to me. I kind of thought that was an interesting idea, but I didn't know what everybody else thought, but I would certainly entertain that as well.
Big opinion.
That would be against the advice of legal counsel based on Iowa Code, Chapter 21. We ruin everything.
So my question for that, though, is if we ask them to do it and they agree to do it?
I don't believe we should ask them to do it. Because that would lead to some, I mean, that would lead to the impression that if they don't do that, would you be more likely to vote against that person?
And be held against them or something, yeah.
So they could voluntarily say, hey, we decided to do this, but I don't think that can come from us.
Well, at least we're rotating the responses, so some people have to go, everybody will have to go first.
That's if we have more than one applicant. You never know. There could only be one.
And yeah, do we officially just have one so far? I'm not asking for the name, but
Yes, we only have one.
What is our deadline for receiving?
Deadline is March 12th at noon.
Yeah, we have Yeah, so my two cents worth is, is again, I was, I would, I'm not in favor of number, option one. Of those two options, I, again, I've said from the beginning, I'd be in favor of option number two of just sending them all out so that we can gauge the response to all of those questions. I do understand, again, I've interviewed enough people that I do understand the aspect that Renee is talking about to be able to gauge how they are thinking on their feet. So, you know, to that extent, I can support what Renee is proposing as long as we really try to push as many of the questions to be written in advance. I'm anticipating a number of candidates and rotating them and all that, I think is gonna add an element of confusion. So, but I would support what Renee's proposing as long as we try to push, you know, quite a number of the questions out ahead of time and leave a certain amount for that evening.
And I'm not in favor of that. I'm more in favor of one where we don't send any questions out. Even the basic ones, because, I mean, it goes back to body language and how you respond. Even if you send out the question that says, do you plan to run in the future, and they mark yes or they mark no. Or if you ask them up point-blank and they say, well, heck no, or of course, and they're all excited about running in the future. There's a difference between how they answer in person and just checking a box. So, and again, with other questions, too. I wanna see the body language. I wanna see how they respond to them and not just
What kind of a body language are you gonna get from somebody answering, are you gonna run in two years? Do you plan to run in two years? What kind of body language are you really gonna get from that? There are three or four of these questions we asked last time that I don't see much of a body language in that one, and do you have any conflicts of interest? I mean, there's half these questions that are very short, so, I mean, again, I would, I'm not sure I agree with your point on body language on every question. Certainly, the ones that are more in-depth require some body language, but I'm not sure I agree with that aspect.
I'd like to see everyone answer all of them.
Randy, have any thoughts on that?
I think the attorney has a
Well, I have actually, like, when you're done talking about the question procedure, I actually have another little
Option four?
Just, it's just another little procedural change that you guys should be aware of. So, and now that I have all your attention, I suppose you want me to throw that in?
Please go ahead.
So it was brought to my attention actually this morning that, I was not at the meeting the last time, so I don't know if you guys did paper ballots or how you did the votes. But each of those votes has to be disclosed how every person voted. And I don't know how that was done at the last meeting.
It was done that way.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you mean who voted for whom?
Yeah.
No.
After each round.
I recall
The city clerk. She recorded them.
Yes, but she wasn't like, Steve voted for X and Nick voted for X.
It was published in the minutes or somewhere. I recall seeing it, so
It does at some point in the meeting also have to be disclosed.
Oh, at the meeting?
It doesn't necessarily need to be, well, I'm clarifying this with IPIB. I've sent the question out. You can do it that way, but it will have to be disclosed at the meeting who voted which way.
I have no problem with that.
I just wanted to make sure you guys know that so that doesn't throw anything else. No more surprises.
I guess, I mean, my opinion is, and I've, we've done this several times since I've been on council, I was appointed that way 2013. I think it's, you know, the system has worked just fine to have the candidates come, make a presentation, and then we ask them questions. If you wanna predetermine the questions and do the rotation, that's great. I'm fine with having them just show up and answer questions on the spot. If they're gonna represent the community, a community of 40,000 people, they should be able to think on their feet and answer questions.
I'll just point out, too, that I've heard people say, well, if you ask all these, let's say, five people applied and you're, everyone's getting asked the question, it might take four hours. Well, I think it's important. So if it does take four hours, it takes four hours. It's a very important decision that's made, so I think that, I have no problem with it being a long meeting because of it. I'll put that out there, too.
We've had plenty of long meetings.
Yeah.
But that's, I'm just one person. That's my opinion, so
That's just usually Tom talking.
What are you looking for, for Thursday?
Well, it sounds like majority want questions asked at the Thursday council meeting. So I guess if you wanna ask them yourselves, then I don't really need to know the questions. Or if you wanna send me a list of questions.
I don't really care if I'm the only person. I just thought we asked the questions last time. Maybe we didn't. I thought I remembered asking. So I was just walking my dogs and I came up with two gems and I'm like, oh, haha. Oh, yeah, I was dictating in my phone and I'm like, blah, 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 and my dog is like, what? But yes, if you, if we're gonna follow them through you, if that might
So I would say just send any questions that you would like asked to me. And then at the council meeting for March 19th, I'll just, we'll have everybody present and then I'll go through the questions one at a time and everybody can answer.
Okay, and then we'll have an opportunity to ask them individual questions that aren't on your list.
Yeah.
Because there may be a question that comes up, particularly that person.
Yep.
Yeah.
We'll do it not in order, you'll
In rotating order, so everybody should have an opportunity to go first.
Can you supply us with a list of the questions from last time in case there's stuff that we decide isn't? I didn't see that.
We got that.
What's that one?
I'll resend it. It wasn't in the packet. It was a separate email.
No, it's a separate email.
Okay, yeah, if you would just push it to me again, thank you.
And I guess to take that one step further, we can talk about it Thursday, but as we get to that point, as we know the number of applicants and we know the final list of the questions, can we get the applicant's name with all the questions underneath for a sheet to us so that we can kind of jot down
Sure.
any comments or reactions we have
Yeah.
to that. So otherwise, I'm, we're kind of all scratching in different ways. That keeps that in a little more of an organized fashion. So I think our goal is, how can we do, continue to do a better job in these situations? And I think we're certainly doing that from the last one I saw. So I think our goal is, how can we do, continue to do a better job in these situations, and I think we're certainly doing that from the last one I saw. Yes, Ms. Brand.
So I have a question for the attorney. If, if someone who is applying approaches us outside of council meetings and wants to try and pitch themselves to us, is that something we should put a stop to legally?
If it's just you on your own, that's not an open meetings violation. You may want to choose not to have that conversation based on whatever appearance it may give. I mean, but there's nothing in the law that says you can't have that conversation.
Okay. It hasn't happened. I'm just asking, in case it did happen. At least it hasn't happened to me.
Yes, Ms. Cadell.
Um, and the last time we did this, I think we had two candid, two of the four tied twice in a row. Is there a smoother process that we can decide amongst ourselves, or that legal could recommend for? I mean, we, we really, like, we tied, and then we kind of were just like, okay, make yourself shine for us again, and let's revote, and then it tied again. I mean, I'm not suggesting we flip a coin, but is there anything, that was just very awkward, so, with an even number up here, it's...
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, it's an even number. There's six of you. Your votes all count the same, so I don't know of anything. That's the procedure that, I mean, if you wanted to do it some way other than a vote, I, the statute just says by appointment. So, I mean, but I think vote is probably the most practical way. So, I mean, we can always cross our fingers that there's only one candidate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so the procedure, the procedure is, if it's tied, like, last time, if it's tied three times in a row, then we draw out of a hat. That's where we were just about ready to do last time, is draw out of a hat. And, and to me, I thought about that, is that bad or good? It just tells me that we're at a point where, you know, we're satisfied with either candidate.
Okay.
And that was kind of my conclusion. I go, draw out of a hat. I go, that seems kind of crazy. But then I said, well, that's, we're basically saying, we think both candidates would, would be, would do a good job, so...
There's a procedural...
I don't know how many times we continue to vote beyond that.
Right, I agree.
There's a procedural document that's approved at that meeting, and it's, it, uh, changes for how many candidates there are. So you'll see how the night should play out as far as votes.
So we will get a, a, a document with the rules?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, let's say the first go-round of votes, um, like, right now, in my head, I've heard seven people are interested. One is only official, but let's just say that there are seven. And the six of us vote on, we vote to push three forward or what have you. If the calculations from a first vote, should there be some kind of tie, come back and factor in, you know what I mean? Like, there's this cool thing on Survivor, if you watch that, that like, if you have passed votes from tribal council, they stack up against you at the end, so I just didn't know if that's what we should be doing, or waiting, like, if we all agreed that there was one question that was like the thing, and we waited it, yeah, so, anyway. It's all interesting, so, okay.
Yeah.
I think it's smooth, smoother.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else on that? So is there anything on Thursday for this item, or that, that was just for tonight?
Right, there's not, there won't be anything on Thursday to vote for.
Okay. All right. That brings us to the end of the agenda. If there's anything else anyone would like to discuss that's on the agenda that we haven't discussed? Okay, then we'll move on to the closed session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section twenty-one point five, subsection one C of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation as permitted under Section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. May we have the legal opinion, please?
I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code twenty-one point five one C.
Thank you. Before we vote, anything? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Ms. Cadell?
Yes.
Mr. Sernet?
Yes.
Were adjourned to closed session, we'll return to open session after the completion of the closed session. Thank you for joining us.